There are quite a few here being these with names around here.
Call me.
Hello, come to you in prayer today, Lord, and thank you for the day that you've given us an opportunity to be here today. Lord has you to be with this institution to move forward, be with us today as we conduct business with this college. Thank you, Rob, that you give us the word, lead us, guide and direct us in all things in the year. All these things we're asking your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice everyone coming. Need a motion, second, I'll approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda presented.
Yeah, second.
I'll second.
All the third. Direction, miss, the last meeting.
If motion will accept the made present.
No motion.
I'll second that.
Motion second, all the third.
Alright.
Alright, so the time is too poor.
Here are your board books, little section starting on page fourteen. Looking at budget to actual as of the end of April. So that's eighty-three percent into the fiscal year. Um, looking at the revenue on the top, uh, half of the page, you can see we're, um, we're doing pretty well on all those categories. We've actually exceeded our budgeted revenue in the non-operating revenue and that's because of property taxes being just a little higher than what we had budgeted for. Then on the bottom half of the page, you can see our expenses is sort of using that eighty-three percent as our guide, guideline. You can see all those categories are actually at or below, um, that target. So, uh, there you can start a roof on that side as well. Uh, following that, you see just sort of those, uh, the numbers that go with that. Page sixteen hundred capital budget and, um, number of projects going on there. Uh, if, uh, we do, we have completed this like sin roof. Uh, we haven't completely paid for it yet, so, um, that happened just a little bit after this report, so, um, but that project is complete. And then, uh, of course, we have ongoing projects in, uh, several of our other areas. Then, um, following that, look at our cash balance on page nineteen, that pie graph. You see that we're in a good position there, um, beginning of May, so, um, towards the end of our semester. We've got good cash balances there. Following that is a list of our certificates of deposit. We don't have any changes in that to report. And then finally, you have a bid report, uh, that somewhat goes with, um, some other items you have on your agenda to approve some, um, contracts, one of which is the mobile app. So you'll see more about that in that, um. Any questions?
Any motion approved?
Same.
The motion second. It's real.
Professor Betterston?
Yes.
Professor Yerkeson?
Yes.
Professor Hager?
Yes.
Professor Garrison?
Yes.
Professor Shaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, my time for the question for.
Alright, it has been a busy month. We've had a lot of things going on as we year end towards Memphis. And I'm gonna ask that, uh, Dr. Phelan speak to us about Liberal Arts Week.
Alright, now Liberal Arts Week was April twenty through the twenty-second. Um, it was a great week. Uh, the focus was on Egypt and Egyptian culture. Um, so they did a lot of these activities focused on those areas. Um, there was an honors lecture by Dr. Rebecca Kearns and, um, Michelle Fisher, um, that, uh, focused on, um, let's see, looked like some cultural stuff there. Um, I didn't get to attend that one, so, uh, that was, that was an interesting thing. Um, Arthur, an author lecture by Mark Sanders. We had a poetry slam and history lecture by, um, Dr. Ryan Wixby. And again, all of these had, he focused on, he did. We had good attendance at all of these activities. Um, lots of students participated, especially the poetry slam. I think, uh, did you want to kind of, just kind of kind of talk about the poetry slam just right?
This is, uh, Tisha Ruzan. She's in our English department and she was part of the poetry slam. Actually helped us put that on, so it might be, I defer and describe that for you. Hi, um, we had about sixty-eight people come to the poetry slam this year. Our poetry slam is actually an annual event that has taken place for over thirty years. Uh, we had a two-year hiatus. Um, we tried to do it digitally two years ago and that didn't work out so well. So last year we skipped it due to COVID and then restarted this year. Um, we also had a performance by our three-verse choir this year to start off the poetry slam. Since normally Liberal Arts Week concludes the musical, um, and since the musical this year actually, uh, over, sort of overlapped, we weren't able to do that. So the choir performed and then we had a presentation by the art department where they actually had a interactive hieroglyphics artwork piece that the students were able to try and decipher during the poetry slam. And then at the end, those who successfully accomplished the goal put in to win a, um, gift card from the bookstore. So we had several different students, um, perform their own work. And then we actually distributed the two thousand twenty-two Confluence, which is our, um, creative writing journal. And we distributed that. It will also be submitted for evaluation in a number of different creative writing journals, um, which are nationwide events. We usually do pretty well, so we're very excited about that. Um, we plan on continuing with Liberal Arts Week and the future in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. And then we have the Industrial Tech Fair. And I'm gonna ask that Will Cooper come and speak about that.
Hello, everyone. So this year was our seventy-third annual Team Industrial Tech Fair. Um, Three Rivers College has been a host for over twenty years. So this year we had over two hundred and eleven projects. Um, uh, there's various, there's some schools that have junior high kids, but for the most part it's high school projects. Um, we've never had a chance to go to a really nice team event. Um, there was some really quality woodworking, beautiful projects. It's also made because you have students that'll come along and you can actually, the ones that come repeatedly, see the progression year to year with them, do their skills. So overall, a really great event. Um, Heather Carlton, um, from Three Rivers works with, uh, Andy Stover from Jackson High School to put on this event. Um, right now, we have, we have, we're now the seventh school's participating. So over the period of last year, less and less schools are having those kind of programs. But some schools are just doing with, away with them all together. Some schools have switched over to that. But to have two hundred and eleven projects with seven schools is actually pretty remarkable. So a number of projects aren't going to come. So the students are actually working harder in those, um, programs and actually submitting more projects. So overall, a really great event. Um, the district actually kind of goes out of Three Rivers area. So we actually had four of the seven schools participate that are in our, within our region, our normal district. So it's a good opportunity to reach schools outside the area. So great event. Um, we're always thankful to host it, so thank you.
Thank you. And then I'll ask Professor White to come forward and talk about the music department, the musical.
I got it. Always bring our materials with me. So this is our program for the musical. Imagine posters, the pamphlets. Uh, again, my communication stays here. You don't have to wait to do this, you're not supposed to pass it. And those of you who are there, you're gonna get one anyway. Okay. Uh, Cindy White was a music director, Sherry Mitchell, a director. We have four support personnel, uh, soundboard, lightboard, twenty-eight cues, eighty-two lights, I know that. And two spotlight operators. Uh, Dr. Payne asked how long I had been working on the musical. I couldn't really tell him. I looked it up in September is when I started. I'm actually still working on it, I think. We have twelve actors, the cast refers every Tuesday evening, since whenever. We had three performances that were well attended and received. Our actors helped with props, sets, costumes, and Cindy and Sherry made most of the costumes they received. Um, it was, uh, a compelling story, uh, with morals, uh, uh, about people achieving, uh, personal goals, overcoming hardships, and, uh, I think the cast did a nice job and, uh, good attendance. And, uh, the tech was, uh, was pretty good. We didn't listen to any sound cues or light cues. Um, when Mike was on duty, we fixed it before anyone noticed. So, uh, I think it was successful and it's great to be indoors in the attendance center, uh, doing musical. Last year we had an outdoor, uh, musical down at the loading dock here in Southern. That was our spelling this year.
And I do want to mention that if, this was one of the most challenging productions that the music department do, um, from a performer's standpoint. So all of the students that were on stage performing were on stage the entire time of the production. So generally, the actors move on and off stages, different, uh, scenes are played out. In this one, the entire cast was on stage the entire time, which is a lot more difficult than you would think it was. So well done, well thinking, to the music department.
And we, uh, and was for encounter, all sitting. I should have done this last time. I didn't know they were back to back. I, I have a routine though, so. And then we have matching posters, pamphlets, uh, programs, uh, who featured our students on all of our, uh, programs on the cover this year. Uh, they know we appreciate them and it would be hard to do these things without them. And you can see their hometowns. Which we always, we always put that in our, uh, in our program when possible, when we have earned it. That too is important. You get to see, you see maybe, but thank you. So the day before our, our, May tenth performance, I discovered that we in our audience had Triceline or Prickensine Brokers, uh, the Simmons Santron six hundred volt, two hundred amp circuit. So we called maintenance ahead and fixed it. But I didn't know where it was. You have to know where the power comes in, where it leaves, like it does when it's in the building. So, uh, we worked to do that. Unfortunately, one of the A's actually both needs back to the miss. Or not working well. So that means setting up for the performance a little, a little more stressful than usual. But, uh, we're just bringing your diversity, uh, especially myself included. So Dr. Dr. Payne had our maintenance staff bring out several large exhaust fans. And we kept all the doors open to the theater, uh, during the concert. We kept most of the stage lights off and we put, uh, stand lights on the music stands and battery powered candles on the apron. Made a nice effect. Not what we intended, but it worked. Uh, the choir test and the body band performed the full program. We featured two senior, uh, music students that are in our senior, like, U programs at the Methodist University, uh, working on forty-three degrees. And they both, uh, they both conducted, uh, one piece each on the concert. That's a first for us. Uh, we shared stories of our graduating students and where they plan to continue to. Uh, our band is a community group. I have, uh, members bringing in age for junior high, high school, college students, uh, post-college, even retired people. So it's, it's quite a, it's quite a unique group. And, uh, we have members from all of our districts, Butler County, Ripley, and Wayne. And, uh, we have a group driving over from Fort Huntis, uh, Kate Derato, and one member who spends two and a half hours driving every week from Marshall, Missouri. She used to be in the band, she moved away and her people were playing dance with the pools, so she had to come back and play, and play with us. We have several high school directors who play in the group. And one director, uh, he plays, his wife plays, and then their kids are playing in the group. This year we've got two recitals, two concerts, her music festivals. And we're about to bring in our, usually bring, I can bring a couple of ten thousand students on, on campus. And we're back here again, thank, thank goodness. Uh, Dr. Davis, our chair, uh, was sampling opinions, uh, in the lobby. And, uh, most people felt that we handled the, uh, unique circumstances of the year, uh, well during the program, the election selections, and, uh, I think we showcased our students. We put the community back in our community college. And, uh, it's good to be back, bring the person in for the programs we've been able to do this this year. And I'd like to thank all of you here for your support.
Thank you, Professor White.
Oh, thank you.
And we inducted a new class of students into Phi Theta Kappa. And I'm going to ask Mr. Michael Angelo to, uh, come forward and speak to that.
I also brought paperwork. So this was a program for our evening, our induction ceremony. What I wanted to hand it out for is to open up the students who are in Phi Theta Kappa. That's the, that's the important part. Uh, I did want to say that every fall, um, we cruise and go through our list of honor students. And we invite them to join Phi Theta Kappa. And Phi Theta Kappa is the National Honor Society for Junior Community Scholars. Been around for about seventy-five years, uh, founded in Missouri. Um, and there's over two million members. So we, this past year, there's about three hundred students on the honor list. And when we offer a membership, there is an eighty dollar lifetime fee. It's a one-time fee, uh, to be a member, which is actually pretty good. Cause like, I remember like the American Chemical Society and I gave about five hundred dollars a year for that membership. And of course, you probably remember some things too that you pay yearly, well, they pay one time. Uh, it does make a little bit of a burden, some of our students can't afford to, to join the society for that eighty dollars a year. We try to help some of them with, uh, some of our dues money comes back to us. We get twenty out of that eighty. And that's how we can put on a program with that twenty, plus the support of the college, uh, which gives us this budget too. Uh, also, we have fifty-five members this past year, uh, joined, uh, which is actually excellent because we haven't changed in the last five years. Which is actually, I think, phenomenal because the amount of students on the honor all this drop along with, uh, you know, the amount of students. From five years ago, we were asking four hundred students and now we're asking three hundred students. And our membership is maintained. Uh, we had the last four inductions, we've averaged about fifty-five. We have a hundred members at any one time on campus, because of course we're two years. Um, and we do roll over a lot. We kind of, the good news, bad news about Phi Theta Kappa is our students graduate. So as soon as, you know, they're, they're president, vice presidents and things in the society, that they graduate, uh, move on. Um, this past year, the students in the society, they plan the meetings, they plan the events, they plan the induction ceremony. Um, so this year they wanted to hear from, um, other colleges. So we invited colleges and throughout the semester, especially the three across the hall, and they all came, talked to our students. And I really try to stress that, I'll just use CMO as an example. Uh, a student who's a Phi Theta Kappa student that transfers to CMO gets thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, so that of course makes that eighty go a long way, thirty-five hundred. And of course, we use that as a kind of marketing tool, uh, but also different colleges give different amounts. And I hear from about three colleges a day that want our graduates. Uh, even I'm from New York, I even get, you know, New York, Boston, et cetera. Uh, so our students are in demand, especially the Phi Theta Kappa students. Uh, so again, we, we had various colleges come in this year, um, and then they planned the induction ceremony in spring. And we had about, oh, about half the number come to the induction ceremony. We filled the, the hall that day, uh, with the parents, families, friends, uh, the students. Uh, some of our students in Phi Theta Kappa are online students, so they tend not to come to the meetings. The meetings are bi-weekly. Um, there's a few that are in like Kate and Ken at other places. We do zoom the meetings up, uh, and that's kind of picked our numbers up that are actually attending meetings. They get about twelve students in the room itself and about another twelve, uh, zoom in. Some of our students, especially, we have a lot of nursing, uh, students that are in Phi Theta Kappa and they can't attend our meetings because there are these blocks in the middle of that. But we've had a real successful year, a real great group of kids. Uh, again, the only, uh, I wish we could give more to join. Uh, again, it's that eighty dollars a year doesn't sound like much to us, but for a lot of our students, it's, uh, you know, gas money for the week or, or food or whatever. Um, the college does, uh, through the foundation, give us money from time to time, uh, to help out with that eighty dollars. And we do try to, uh, help some students. We bring about four or five students in a semester, uh, you know, with, with that help. Any questions about Phi Theta Kappa or our induction ceremony?
Very well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations for the students. On April eleventh, we held an distinguished alumni reception for Dr. Amy Rowland. Excuse me. It was well-tended and, uh, really a fun time for Dr. Rowland. This is one of our events for the year where we highlight a successful graduate. Of course, Dr. Rowland will also serve as our commencement speaker on Friday evening. Uh, then on May sixth, we had the employee appreciation luncheon. Uh, normally at these luncheons, we, and this is, there's no official program other than saying thank you to everyone for all the incredible work that they've done over the year. And we normally have a gift for all of the employees. Uh, this year, thanks to supply chain issues, the gift, which will be, um, a set of college shirts, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll get those out when they actually arrive. So they, I don't even know what the latest line is. When they're, they're scheduled to, to, to arrive. We, we felt thankful that we got the sample set that we ordered so we could verify everyone's size. Uh, but I do want to mention that the last couple of years have been extremely difficult years, uh, for everyone, but especially at the college. There's been a lot of challenges that came out of the environment, a lot of pressure, uh, that's just on top of the normal difficulty of operating a significant sized institution, dealing with large numbers of, um, students. And I can tell you that from my standpoint, what makes Three Rivers the great place that it is, is the people that we were appreciating that day. They're the ones that make this happen. They're the ones that have pushed us forward. One of the documents that we have been working on is the midpoint report for Aspire twenty twenty-five. So Aspire twenty twenty-five, as you know, is the strategic plan of the college. This is the time in that plan where we update. Here are all of the projects that we have been doing to achieve what we laid out in Aspire twenty twenty-five. It is an incredible list. And when you look at the list, it's really unbelievable the amount of work that has been done here the last two and a half years. And not just a lot of little projects. We're talking about some massive game-changing projects that involve the entire organization. Uh, just a few. So the improvements we've made in our data security and data security infrastructure was an extremely heavy lift, um, but we're so much better now than we were. Uh, if you look at the expansion of online programming, it's been huge. So prior to COVID, we were down a path that we were going to have a fully online associate of arts with a couple, maybe three pathways for a student to pursue. From the time COVID hit in March of twenty and twelve months later, we had worked out twelve transfer pathways that are fully online and that continues to grow. But what that means is the faculty of this institution, while they were trying to deal with a completely new instructional environment, went through a redesign process, a complete redesign process of their online courses and pushed through like hundred and thirty-five different courses.
Not, not, not only that, they started out, not even around zero because of the computer hack that we had a few weeks prior to COVID. So basically we started COVID with no computer system.
Really, really close to that, yeah.
Took it pretty well.
Yeah.
Everything shut down and y'all had to re-engineer and try to get information back. And that was a, even a more astonishing, given that fact.
And then add on top of that, we are implementing, uh, a product called, a program called Rager Connect, which is based on a software system called Starfish, which is a college-wide student retention and completion program. So this program is extremely complicated and everybody has to be involved. So the way this shook out was everybody that wasn't involved in pushing forward online classes and the support systems that went along with that. So we created and implemented support systems for students so that literally if you're a member of the military stationed anywhere in the world that has internet access, you can do every process at this college for a moment. You can be advised, you can register, you can apply, you can start classes, take a classes, receive tutoring, receive counseling, all of the things that make a student successful or available virtually. So it wasn't just the classes, that was one piece. Everybody that wasn't involved in that was involved in Rager Connect. So this had to be integrated into our computer systems. This had to be integrated into our operational systems. Uh, financial data had to be integrated into this. Everybody had to learn how to use this. We had to decide on over two hundred distinct touchpoints that if that happens, something, the system does something. So. So if a student does well in class, a faculty member can go in and go, kudos for Edie Dilbeck. And the system will flag that and send a message to that student going, great job, keep up that good work. If a student misses class, it's flagged in the system, and the student is communicated. And not only is the student automatically communicated with, it sends that information to their advisor, to their faculty. So what you've done is build a team around this student to push them forward for retention and completion and success. Those are three huge projects, and they're three of about a hundred and fifty unique things that were completed as part of our work on our strategic plan of moving forward. And it's the employees here, the faculty and staff, that are doing things that are phenomenal. So I talk to other college leadership quite a bit. I can assure you that this institution has responded and moved forward in the last two years in a way that very, very few other institutions have. More than half of the institutions that I have come into contact with, their response to everything that's happened the last two years was to pull up and turtle into their shell and go, okay, let's just survive. I have not met anyone at an institution that has moved forward the way we have. So collectively, the guys that work, guy, the ladies and gentlemen that work at this institution made a decision that, no, we're not going to sit back. We're going to look at this as an opportunity. Let's take a look at our strategic plan, what we've gotten works, and let's build on that, move forward, and position ourselves into the future. All of that, from beginning to end, come down to the people that work here, that make this place what it is. So the huge appreciation to our employees who day in, day out, just get down and do the business of what our students need. And related to that, May thirteenth, we celebrated Student Excellence at the Student Excellence Awards Ceremony. So this is our opportunity. It's one of the two big student events at the end of the academic year, the other one being commencement. But this one, we focus on the students who have really gone above and beyond in a huge number of ways. So within their academic discipline, they have shown excellence in the classroom. Uh, we also recognize students that are outstanding servants, uh, to their fellow students and to the institution. And we recognize the participants of the Student Leadership Academy, which is a special activity that has been put together and run over the past few years to give students opportunities to expand their horizons and you learn new skills. So Student Excellence Awards is a really great time. Uh, so Michelle Wilbridge and Edie organized this and put it on. They do a great job. It's very efficiently run. Everybody comes in. We can recognize our outstanding students without, uh, belaboring the point to where we don't want to be there. So it's an extremely well-run event, uh, and a really fun event. And we have some upcoming events. So May nineteenth, we are going to celebrate EMS Week. Uh, we're, we're open to the public and of course, emergency responders. And we will have a huge group here from one to four, uh, celebrating the EMS Week and recognizing our emergency response personnel. Nurse Penning is on May twentieth to PM at the Tennessee Fine Arts Center. Uh, always a great event. Then of course, six PM, May twentieth, this Friday, commencement, the big event. This right here is what we work all year for. We have two hundred and twenty-five students who are going to participate in commencement. Uh, well over double that number who will be awarded, um, degrees and certificates, uh, that same night, but who were not able to attend. Then on May twenty-first, we'll host a retirement reception for Coach Gene Best in the Liva Family Sports Complex. May thirtieth is Memorial Day, College Summer Hours, where we move, uh, to ten-hour days, Monday through Thursday, uh, begin May thirty-first and go through month of July, so June and July. Then on June third through the fifth, and June tenth through the twelfth, Center Stage presents The Odd Couple. This is our first center stage production in quite a while. They have not been able to put shows on due to the pandemic, so everyone is really looking forward to this. This, of course, is our college community theatrical, uh, production team. We've got students, we've got faculty and staff, and we have members of the community that are involved in the production of this show. Tickets just ten dollars. Then on June sixth, auditions for Mary Poppins. So if you are interested in taking the stage and letting yourself shine, come try out for Mary Poppins, June sixth and seventh. The Three Rivers College Golf Tournament will be June twenty-fourth at Westwood Hills Country Club. And that, Mr. Chair, is the present.
Do we have any board members that go up this way and that? Gary?
No, no, this one.
Well, that's this one.
Gary, can you come up? This wasn't our last meeting, but, uh, I don't know if it mentioned this by our senate services chairman of the board trustees, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. Is your permission? Hey, I'm going to have some executive session, so.
Just make a motion, you want to do a session?
Second.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Sure.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
There we go. We've got a copy of that order. Uh, we have some asks for consideration about on, uh, existing HVACs.
All right, so this is part of our COVID response in approving this. You will add, um, a lot of fresh air capacity, a much healthier environment, and much greater filtration.
Anybody have any questions, discussion?
Move to approve this.
Motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes. Motion approved. And now we'll discuss the parking lot repair.
Yes, we, uh, received last year a special appropriation for one point five million dollars for repair maintenance items. Uh, at the top of our list is repairing our parking lots that are thirty-plus years old uh, and have deteriorated to the point that they need to be remedied. So this would cover actually removing the, uh, parking lot, repairing the base, and then putting four inches of clean asphalt above it. Uh, main lot, small lot, some roadway works. Um, quite a bit of, of that along with additional curbing to control some water erosion.
Have you, uh, you've got the numbers on that?
Yeah, so we had the college architect direct solicit the two paving contractors, uh, that have the capacity to do this. Both have fully evaluated. The parking lots made the recommendation that they think it should be removed and replaced as opposed to mill and top. Uh, the bottom, the large parking lot at the bottom has been re-topped at least one time. Uh, you can tell from the way that parts of it are cracking, that parts of the base have failed. And if you have cracks and alligatoring going on in asphalt, if you mill it and overlay it, that's going to transfer that.
Sure. And at the time that part was put in, it was, unless it was translated, it put a lot of material in.
Could I make a request for even taller speed bumps?
Yes. Speed bumps in the parking lots are actually included in this bit.
And I can unmark so you forget about it and you hit it really hard?
Did they mention how much the oil has changed for us in asphalt?
Yes, they have. Um, so.
And where to go with that? Uh, is the concrete competitive? I, 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 but it's pretty nice.
And I looked into that, so, uh, no. We would have had to cut concrete down to two dollars a, uh, a foot and stop. And we'd never get there. No, I, I had the same thought. When, when oil is generally this high, a lot of times you can do concrete close. So your average cost for flat work, about seven bucks a foot. Uh, figured because we had this much, thought maybe we could get it for four. But when you look at how many square feet that we're doing, because this also includes, um, Westwood, you'd have to be two bucks or less a foot to get it done. The only people globally that would have the capacity to do this is a front door because you've got to have the equipment to do huge job of watch. They would have never even got, once we figured out where that breakpoint was, it was like, ah, no point common. But yeah, that was evaluated because you'd rather have concrete parking lots and roadways than asphalt. I mean, you've got three times the life, and you repair, you can do it pretty easily if something goes wrong. Uh, but just the cost differential is, is too high to make it work.
Do I need, do we still need fill over the Liva parking lot? Where we're going to be coming down the hill in the trench down there, is, are we going to be able to haul all that off there and get rid of the cheap and then haul all that asphalt and pick up somewhere else?
Oh, um, no, they want the asphalt. They haul that off as part of the deal.
Okay.
Because they grind it with recycling.
They can add it back in their mixer after the oil's dry. Because they're taking a drill up anyway. I think they put thirty percent back in the mix.
Mm-hmm.
So they, it's a big deal, recycling asphalt.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at on this one?
Oh, summer.
It would be this summer.
Start immediately. I want them out here Monday.
I'm making motion to approve the repairs.
A motion?
Second.
Second.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
And the last one is for campus mowing services. So our contract came to an end with Young. We put it out to bid. Uh, Moss Mowing was the winner of the bid. Young did put it to bid, but he put it in late, so he is not a qualified bidder. Uh, and either way, my, Moss would have won based on the prices they put in, even if he had been on time.
All right. Any questions?
Move to accept the bid.
Motion, I agree. Second.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes. Here. Consideration of personnel.
Move to approve all personnel decisions and judgments there associated with.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yeah.
Trustee Shaw?
C, C, N, E, K.
Trustee, get him, first, please. Got me confused.
What else?
That is awesome.
We've got regulations, right? What time do we need to do the hearing?
Uh, it's going to be in the parking lot at four-thirty in the quarter, so we're ready to vote. Uh, lineup begins at five-thirty, so.
Okay.
Take the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. All over the floor.
Uh, I will not approve the.
I will not approve.